So I would like to call the Newton Planning Board Meeting to Public Session for April 12, 2022 at 7:02 PM. Do you need a motion? I don't think so. Not to start them.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Ah ha. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. And we have online Mrs. White.
And Ms. Rowden.
Ms. Rowden. Can you hear us okay, Barbara, today?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Page two.
Page two. All righty. Okay. Perfect. So the only, I believe, the only thing on the public agenda tonight is the continuation of the 125 Development New Hampshire Corp of Plastow in New Hampshire requesting a continuation for the public hearing at a four-building condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 273. So this, there was additional material delivered to the town of Newton last Thursday, approximately five hours after the deadline. That was, or more than five hours after our deadline. It didn't allow our third-party review enough time to review all the material. It also didn't allow the administrative assistant to get all the packaging, packages out in time and for us to, you know, review and formulate questions or comments or any other additional, just have a complete thorough review. It's a fairly substantial packet. Ms. Rowden, at this point, do you have any additional comments for the completeness of this application?
At this point, I can't recommend that you accept it as complete, simply because there are some technical aspects that I think you, in particular, need to get your town engineers' comments from. There are a few waivers that have been requested that I do think help to make it a more complete package, but I'd be happy to talk about those in more detail, but I do think you should hear from the applicant, at least about the overall concept of the plan, to at least get some of the ball rolling.
Sure.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers here for the applicant. This project is 143.76 acres in the light industrial and commercial zone. Property is currently undeveloped, has access to Route 108 on the south end of the property, has access to Puzzle Lane via the previously approved right-of-way associated with the four-lot subdivision we did last year, or maybe it was earlier this year. It has access to Howard Lane via an existing right-of-way left at the end of Howard Lane. The intent of this project is construct Phase Two of the industrial park. The complete industrial park will consist of approximately five phases. Phase One is complete and consists of the existing Puzzle Lane and the associated buildings. Phase Two is the project that we have in front of you tonight and consists of four industrial buildings, access from right, or sorry, access from Route 108 to what we're calling Industrial Drive, and a section of Puzzle Lane from Industrial Drive to across the existing gas easement. Phase Three, which will consist, let me show you actually. Give you an overview. Phase Three will consist of completing the loop from Industrial Drive to Puzzle Lane at the current extent of Puzzle Lane and a couple of smaller industrial buildings that we're proposing along the loop. Phase Four, we're anticipating one or more larger buildings we want on the west side of the property, as shown in this area. And Phase Five will consist of a residential component on the two residentially zoned lots in the northwest corner of the project. The residentially zoned lots are currently, we're currently in the ZBA for that project. Going back to Phase Two, which is what the project is here in front of you, it's four industrial buildings totaling 207,000 square feet with associated parking and loading areas. It has access to Route 108 via a 1,955 linear foot private cul-de-sac we're calling Industrial Way. It has construction of a 1,067 linear foot cul-de-sac that will eventually connect to Puzzle Lane, that we're calling Puzzle Lane, and construction of the gated emergency access lane to Howard Lane. So it'd be an emergency access gated with a, what do you call it?
Lockbox.
Crash bar or crash access. Buildings are all service body onsite wells and septic systems. The storm sewers collected via roadside ditches, as well as a series of catch basins and pipes and is directed to. One of the stormwater treatment features, which include five infiltration basins, one gravel wetland, one vegetated treatment swale. The proposed construction requires wetland impacts totaling 3,246 square feet, which is associated with the construction of the roadways, as shown. We also require wetland buffer impacts of 102,101 square feet associated with roadway construction and grading for buildings in stormwater. We are also at the ZBA for the proposed wetland buffer impacts. The project will require an HDES alteration of train permit, an HDS wetland permit, an HDOT driveway permit. Prior to the last meeting, we had received comment letters from both the town planner and the towns review engineer. We have addressed or included all the requested items in the revised plan sets, which the chairman alluded to, with a few notable exceptions, and two of those are the sewage facilities and the hydrological study of, for the septic systems and the traffic study. Now, the location of the sewage systems and therefore the hydrological study is currently dependent upon variances that we've requested or in front of the ZBA for. So we will provide those items before we're approved, but if the board requires that we have the waivers in order to accept it, we have submitted those waivers. The other item was the traffic study, which is not required for acceptance, but is currently being completed and coordinated with NHDOT. We'll submit that as soon as we have that to the planning board. We also submitted a waiver to Road Links. It's in your package. The waiver request also lists the manner in which we meet the waiver requirements for that. So we can go through the waivers or any of the other items that the board wishes or take any of the comments or questions the board has.
I have a question.
Go for it.
What is the view from Howard Lane if somebody on that cul-de-sac is looking in? Is it a straight shot to all those buildings?
No. I think I know your question or know the answer. I can show you on the plan here. So there is.
Oh, yeah. Barry, can you just go to the mic, just so a couple of people remotely can hear you? Thank you.
So that's C2A, which gives you a better view of the access. So there is a 50-foot required vegetated buffer between any residentially zoned area and the project. Also, there is a 200-foot structure setback that we respect in that area. Areas where we're asking for relief from, we're in front of the ZBA for. In addition, so there is a 50-foot vegetated buffer. Where the proposed emergency access is shown, you can see we kind of put a curve into it, which will prevent straight shot looking into it, and that was kind of the idea of that as well.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear more about the waivers, although are we taking jurisdiction?
I was not, you know, based on the recommendation of Ms. Rowden, not taking jurisdiction.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I have a couple high-level comments and questions. You mentioned the additional applications and permits that you required for this project. Have you, at this point in time, submitted anything to DES, either Wetlands Bureau or Alteration of Terrain?
We, when the project was here for a previous iteration, they had submitted for the wetland permit.
Okay.
Now, our road or our wetland impacts are very similar, but we are going to update that application. So DES has seen the project, not specifically for what we're doing currently. Alteration of terrain, we have not. That's kind of a cart before the horse kind of thing, so it's either you go in front of the town or you go in front of DES first, but, and typically, the town reviews engineer will have inputs that we can incorporate into our alteration of terrain submittals. NHDOT, we do have an application in front of DOT. We are meeting with them to go over what they require for a traffic permit, so that is in the works.
Okay. I guess I have a couple comments. I haven't had the opportunity to look in the drainage at any length, but it appears that the drainage analysis that's been provided to the towns outdated, based on the updates to the drawings that were just provided. So I think that's something that should get taken care of, and as Mr. Lavoy indicated, it's, at least my opinion, and I'm not sure if it's the opinion of the board, that the traffic study is something that we're definitely interested in prior to moving this forward. Just to have some, you know, additional information on the impacts of the community with, it's a substantial amount of building and, you know, maybe some of these have two vehicles a day or there's 1,000. I guess we don't know. We don't know what the proposed uses are and the capacity of the, both the roadway and, you know, everything associated with that. I haven't had the opportunity to get feedback from the road agent or the fire department. I know that this has been submitted and is in front of them. My anticipate, I anticipate that they'll have some comments specifically on the length of the road, the access, and I have comments on the slope as well as, has a cut fill analysis been done on this design at all?
No.
At first glance, it appears as like there's a substantial amount of fill for the roadway, and maybe it balances out on the site, but if there's a significant import of material proposed, given the proximity to the wetlands and the current market, I think we would like to have some type of, you know, you know, a couple thousand yards, obviously there's no concerns, but if it's a 200,000 or 300,000 yards, I guess I would question what the design intent is and the amount of material being imported to the town, when the site could be potentially balanced out, and it goes into the roadway layout as well. There's a significant section that is, I don't want to call it steep, but it potentially could be reduced in grade, and down gradient of that, there's a large area of roadway that's at a very flat slope. I know that as of right now, there is no intent to have this be maintained or owned by the town as a town road. However, if there's, specifically on the entranceway, I think there's 8% with a gutter line. On the south side, there's slopes draining into the road. I'm not sure if there's any drainage system proposed there. I think there's like 400 or 500 feet of gutter, so I just have, my concerns are from fire access, snow removal, you know, high-level items. I think that's kind of it from a very high level. Does anybody else have any comments?
Dennis, would you like me to go through my?
Sure. If you want to go through your, the waiver request letters, that would probably be helpful to regroup us. I was kind of rambling here for a minute.
I believe you all have copies of the letter I sent into Jim this afternoon. It has some updated comments for today.
Oh, no.
All right. I'll read them through. So I provided a few comments based on my original review letter. So of the, so the first one is that there's a few notes related to Plasto that are still on the plan set that needs to be removed, although they have added the signature block for Plasto, and Plasto's approval is still required. Already touched on the variances that are needed. As far as the waiver request, the septic design, as far as completeness, I think the middle of the waiver checks that box as far as they need to submit septic design, but because if they don't get the variance, there is a good chance that this will have some fairly substantial impacts onto the overall site design, so I don't think the planning board should give any approval or conditional approval until you see that final location. The hydrogeologic study is related to the septic design, so for completeness, it makes sense to probably reasonably grant that waiver, but as far as any final design, I wouldn't recommend that you grant any conditional approval without having that information. The big one is the cul-de-sac, the 1,000-foot road length waiver request. As was already touched on, hearing from the fire chief and road agent is very important in this case. One other item that has come up is that the right-of-way off of Howard Lane that is proposed to be used for the emergency access, the town may want to seek legal advice as far as what is actually allowed on that right-of-way. My understanding is the town does own that right-of-way, but any conditions upon it that may restrict it from being used as an emergency access. It was clearly intended to be a connection, if necessary, whether it is able to be used as an emergency access, I don't have the background on, and it would be smart of the town to look into that, to ensure that this is even optional for the emergency access. I can go through the rest of the letter if you'd like me to, Dennis, but those were the really big ones.
No, I, then I think I hit upon the more, I guess, technical aspects, the engineering side of it, but I think at that point, at this point, we're all set unless anybody.
We're just providing something written to them, right, so that they have a checklist in terms of?
So Ms. Rowden's comments will be provided back, her response. Jim?
I emailed them to everybody the day they arrived.
Including them?
Excuse me?
Including Jones and Beach?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Good. Okay.
She just provided additional commentation on, or comments on the response. The third-party review engineer, the towns engineer, KV Partners, that has not provided a response on the updated application.
Okay. So we need that.
Yeah, Dennis, just one more thing. The architectural detail that was provided in this updated plan set, one of the buildings, Building Three, is 36.5 feet. If that is the intended height, that building will also need a variance.
Again, I didn't quite get that. Sorry.
The, the height, there's a variance, you would need a variance for the height of the building that exceeds, is it 36 feet, Jen?
Yeah, 36.5. The limit is 35, so.
35, yeah, so.
Thank you. So regarding our waivers, we're requesting the waivers to get accepted for the sewage and the hydrogeological, just FYI. We are going to submit those. We know those are requirement prior to approval, but to get, we have to get accepted before we can get approved, right? And we have to know where those, if, where we're proposing the locations of the septic is allowable, which is why we're in front of the ZBA for those. So once we understand if the ZBA grants our variance for the location of the septics, either yea or nay, we'll know where the septics are going to go after that, then we can obtain that or include that information, and those waivers won't be required. The, the road length is one that will, will be either a required waiver either way, but I just wanted to clarify that. We did provide in our letter on April 4th its response to all of Ms. Rowden's and the town engineers' comments as well.
Which we can't review right now. We'll review it at the next meeting because we haven't.
Right. That's all included in that packet.
Are we, so who's going to coordinate with legal, per Jen's recommendation? Who's going to coordinate with legal, per Jen's recommendation?
That would go through my office.
Do we need to approve that as a board?
Actually, yes.
Okay. Can I make a motion? Make a motion to follow the legal, to seek legal guidance per Jen's comment about the right-of-way?
Second. Yes. Mr. Guide.
I'm waiting for the chair asking to pull the帘.
Can I have a, hmm? Sorry, I'm now.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Mashon.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Great.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just had a question regarding your comment regarding the roads and the slopes. I mean, if, I believe we meet the town requirements for all the road slopes, and there is no limit as to the amount of fill that we can bring in. So I'm kind of, I don't, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to approach that, those comments, I guess.
It was just a general comment, specifically the fill is, if there's a, is the intent of this project to bring in, if I sit down and do a cut fill quickly and it's 400,000 yards of material to come on the site, I would be surprised if it's, if that's the approach that the applicant wants to take, to bring in clean material to build the roadway. I'm using, you know, very large numbers.
We can, I guess, review those and confirm what the applicant has intent?
Mm-hmm.
Dennis, this is Barbara. I have a question.
Sure.
Is, I think it might be the responsibility of the planning board to denote what type of fill that we would accept, because I think there are certain things that we don't want the land to be filled with, and I'm not sure how we would go about that.
That is somewhat the nature of my comment, looking at the roadway cross-sections, there's some substantial fills proposed, and the roadway is significantly elevated, which I understand, you know, this wetlands crossing and a few other reasons to elevate the road, but, you know, looking at Station 500 where at six-plus feet of fill and the general. I guess it's, it's such a large project and the amount of proposed grading, which I understand this, it looks like there's some natural undulations in the topography. My comment also relates to the fact that if there is a proposed fill or a proposed cut of 100,000 yards, and their intent is to, you know, mine the material and bring it off-site, so be it, totally fine, but if it's going to, during the construction, significantly change the design, I would rather have that come out now, or at least be made aware versus come back in front of the planning board because of all the drainage change and everything else.
Sure. That's understood. We do, we do show, we have to follow DOT specs on all those, so, and the state laws regarding the fill, so it's got to be clean fill.
And we have an excavation or borrow, an excavation or borrow permit requirement in the town, I believe? A permit for the removal of fill?
Yes. There's an, they would require an excavation permit.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And I understand your comment about the roadway. It was, it's more related to the potential ponding of water as well as, you know, the roadway is crowned, I understand that, but there's also a gutter line.
Absolutely. In areas.
And, yeah, and not, not the entire roadway.
Right.
It's just a few spots that, where it's a long run. That was my comment. So does it, is there any other comments from the board? Ms. White, do you have anything?
Well, I think that we need to wait to see what the town engineer has to say with the, that Mr. Guyer has addressed his concern, so see where we are with that, whether there are still outstanding things outstanding.
I would agree.
And that's kind of where I am with this. There's a lot of things that are going on with this, so I'd like to, with the variances and stuff like that, I don't want to waste your time, I don't want to waste your money having to keep putting it in the paper and stuff like that, and I also don't want it to waste of the board's time to where you guys have to keep coming back every two weeks to sit in front of us. Pretty much, in lack of better terms, a dog and pony show to get this going. So I'd like to, if we could, get it out there so that you gentlemen can go do what you need to do, get it done, and then come in front of us, and then we can address this and move forward with it. You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
And quite frankly, I'm not quite sure. I reached out to Jen and I, she answered a little bit of it, but I'm not sure what it is that we really need to do to be able to do that.
Jen, do you want to provide any clarity on the?
Sure. So at this point, because you have not accepted jurisdiction, the applicant actually has to agree for a continuance, whether that's two weeks or a month. If not, then you will have to make a decision on the application, and if you decide that it is incomplete, that is a decision you can make, but if they agree to a continuance, that's usually best for all involved. I would suggest that Barry discuss with his client whether a two-week continuance or maybe a month-long continuance is warranted. If they think it will take substantially longer than that, they may want to consider withdrawing and reapplying. I don't know where they stand on that, but those are the, those are the suite of options.
Is there any? Yes.
Just so the board knows, the ZBA, at last Wednesday's meeting, continued the preliminary review to May. In May, they may decide to take it to public hearing, which wouldn't be until the first Wednesday in June.
I will say that the planning board's process is independent of the zoning board. While any approval you may give would be conditional upon variances that may be needed, you can't hold up this application simply because it requires variances. You can't wait for the ZBA.
Barry, do you have a preference?
Yeah, we, we have submitted all the com, or responses to all the comments that were provided last time, so I realize that maybe we were a few hours late and that the town review engineer and Ms. Rowden didn't have a chance to review those, but I think the items that you.
So, why don't we just do that if that's what they want? And we'll have, we'll make sure that Ms. Rowden and others will opine on all of this, and then we'll pick it up at the next meeting.
No objections to that.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to push this to the next meeting. Two weeks.
April 26.
April 26.
This is Barbara. I'll second that.
I think she beat you.
You got it.
Bob got it. Okay, can you take the roll call, please, Jim, to?
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Piper.
Aye.
Mr. Guide.
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Just a quick question. I just came to mind. Do you think you'll, do you anticipate your traffic study by then?
No.
Okay, okay.
Do you have any idea what it's, like, how many coming and going of trucks and cars and stuff like that? This is, like, I mean, you must have some idea of what it's going to be.
I haven't run through the counts for, I mean, we can come up with that number.
Yep.
We're not traffic designers.
I know that.
But we can't.
Parking spaces, employees, I mean, number of buildings.
Can't come up with that number for you.
If you can come up with a number in two weeks, that'll be great. I mean, I know it's not a traffic study.
A maximum occupancy would be great in terms of people. Yeah.
Yeah. Just so.
ITE has numbers that gives you the traffic counts, and we can provide those. My, the traffic engineer may have a little bit different take on it, but.
Of course.
Provide you with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Tom.
Mr. Chair, I recognize that you did vote in the public hearing, but I'm going to ask if it would be okay with public speech. In that terms, I recognize that some questions cannot be answered, or they just want to make a stage effect. That was okay.
Should we?
You can, there just can't be a.
A dialogue back and forth?
Dialogue.
Okay.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. My name is Tom Alberti. I am in a butter to this project, Lot 27-3. I live at 2 Ridgewood Road. That is actually in Plastow.
Okay.
So, one of the things I wanted to bring up, because previously, this project was presented in front of a different board, and it was presented as a larger, you know, big-picture project. So, I understand that they pieced this out. So, some of the things I just wanted to effectively extend my concerns or questions to the board for careful consideration as each piece gets considered. So, a reminder that this project is on an aquifer protection area, and it serves the surrounding communities, including our community that we live in, some additional in Plastow, as well as the Newton residents as well. So, I just want to ask the board for careful consideration of the potential impacts to the water resources that could have a major impact, whether it's, you know, contamination or any other factor. So, I understand that the applicant will go through the proper steps, but, you know, it's such an important resource for us and the other butters that I just want to make sure that's carefully considered. Specific to this project or this application, you know, I did note that there was a, in essence, almost a roadway to nowhere. And so, with that regard, you know, it really doesn't have an important role in the ingress and egress to these buildings. Whereas in a future project, a future phase, I think that it would be important to consider that as the ingress and egress to a future development. So, to see that there's a roadway to nowhere, as I stated, I just want to state my concern with that. And I think I did also send a letter to the board regarding that. Also, regarding the variances, I know that that is a challenging situation for you because he's moving the application forward. These are some very large and important variances that it's hard to really, you know, and I understand it can be done, but to condition an approval that requires so much major impact with these approvals of variances. So, with that regard, you know, these are variances that, in my opinion, have just been, gotten a change of clothes, right? These variances have been requested in a different capacity as part of a bigger ask, and now they're being packaged sort of a little bit differently relative to this phase of the project. And it's important to note that those variances were previously not approved, and I just want to, you know, put that forth to the board. And the last thing is, you know, sort of relative to the aquifer protection area, from my standpoint, where I can see out through my backyard, I do see the applicant on parts of the land that do not have current approved applications, basically changing the topography, moving dirt, digging holes, things like that. So, it's important to understand that, you know, with that aquifer protection area, that any impact to that land could be significant. And it's a little bit of a concern that there's already activity on parts of the land that aren't, you know, on an approved application. So, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
I think basically you touched on all of my concerns. Yes, Lynn Jeffries, 12 Ridgewood Road, same, in same neighborhood. When this came up last month, and I was on Zoom, I think it's important that you realize that at the top of your agenda, it asks people to come via Zoom. It asks them not to come via in-person. And so, I sat through that last meeting. Someone commented that the room was quiet, in other words, insinuating that there was no neighborhoods concerned about this development. And we were just, and you can't see, you know, who's there. But I think it's important to remember that there are people on Zoom that you can't see. And the other thing I want to mention at the, when we had the last time, it was determined that it was a development of regional impact. And I don't know how that impacts each little piece, but it was deemed a development of regional impact. So, I think that that's an important thing to keep in mind also. I did want to say that we have had a lot of issues now lately with dirt bikes and all sorts of vehicles on the weekends and evenings down in those roads. And they're very loud. They're very disruptive. And I don't know what the solution for that is, but that's definitely impacting the neighborhood. Thank you.
Just so Ms. Jeffries knows, and the board knows, I do get to see how many people were on. At the last meeting, at one point, we had, I believe it was 37 members.
I think it was the most attended meeting that we've had in quite some time.
In a couple of years.
Both in-person and Zoom. There was probably, probably 40 people in-person last time.
Yeah.
Who endorses that Zoom policy?
That's the Board of Selectmen through the Governor and Council, I believe.
Right.
So, it's the town's policy, not necessarily planning board's. But we're glad to have you in-person. We're more than happy to, I should say. Thank you for speaking and coming.
Thank you.
At this.
Real quick, your question about the dirt bikes and stuff. If you come to Town Hall during business hours, they'd be more than willing to help you file a complaint so that that can get investigated, looked into, and then hopefully, we can come to terms with a solution for it.
And I think at this point, we have some other fairly.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sorry.
I'm also in Butter. My name is Steve Beck, 20 Ridgewood Road. And to the gentleman's comment that who just made about the dirt bikes, having lived in this property for over 25 years, it's a constant battle, I will tell you, because neither the Newton Police or the Plastow Police, because it is on the town line, have the ability to police that area. They don't have the means. There is gates that I personally repaired myself on the behalf of the pipeline that have divided the properties that the dirt bikers take down. And to Mr. Alberti's point about the road to nowhere, that crest, that cul-de-sac is currently designed stops just across from the pipeline easement, which would just create a wonderful place for people to trailer their dirt bikes and ATVs and leave them there and access the pipeline. So, another reason for, you know, that road extending that deep just doesn't make sense during this phase of construction. I was curious, is there a, and maybe Ms. Rowden knows the answer, is there a limit in the town of Newton for the length of cul-de-sac? Because I know there isn't in the town of Plastow. Thank you.
You okay with me answering that, though?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Are you okay with me answering that?
Yes.
The road length limit is 1,000 feet under Newton's road design standards. That's why a waiver is required for a longer road length the applicant has supplied for this plan.
So, it is something that we're considering as there's a waiver in front of the board?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
As I started to ask, would the board ask Mr. Guyer if he can, if they can get
a copy of that sort of plan that shows the different phases?
I was going to say, that sheet C-2 that you had up today, I don't believe is included.
It's not. That'll be included.
Okay. I think it would, both with the board and the public, to kind of see a big picture of what, you know, obviously conceptual.
I have it. I have it from last week.
Oh.
I don't think it shows the phasing.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it has the building and.
It was intended to be included in your package.
Okay.
I will bring individual sheets next time for you.
I think that would be helpful, even if we have an understanding that buildings may move, change. It's just the overall end goal, I guess.
Absolutely.
So, at this point in time, I think we have board business. Is there, do we have any other comments about this? Okay. Moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Physical presence is always a little bit better than, because we get to see you.
So, we have our minutes from March 22nd, 2022. I'm going to ask Jim to read them.
I'll motion to approve the March 22, as I said.
I will second that.
Minutes?
I will point out, Mr. Marshawn found a word I missed. And it will appear in the actual ones that go on the website.
Thank you.
It's on the bottom of page five. It's the word "property." If you read the sentence, it just doesn't make sense.
So, did you get that?
But not bad for 14 pages.
Mr. Guide made the motion. Mr. Piper seconded.
Do you ready for the roll, Jim?
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And I think the final thing on the agenda is the Master Steering Committee. Jen, do you have anything to add or kind of, since most of us are near Mark and?
So, current, so currently, the planning board had contracted with Marquinhem Planning Commission to work on the land use chapter of your master plan. We have done all of the sort of background data gathering, put in some draft language for potential goals and actions based on your current master plan, my knowledge about Newton, some of the findings from the survey that was conducted last spring. But part of that contract is that we would work with the master plan committee to refine those goals and bring them to the full planning board for consideration, but also have some sort of public input event. That could be a meeting before a regular planning board member, planning board meeting. That could be a survey. That could be a forum. But for me to move forward with this project, I need to know who is currently now on the master plan subcommittee, because you had some, some changes to that. And then I also need to meet with them in the next couple of weeks so we can move forward with that project.
I think it's me and Bob.
And I think Annie sent a letter as well.
It's me and you, right?
I stepped down from that, becoming a selectman, because now I'm, and I got that and the other duties as selectman with.
And is Annie on master planning committee anymore? Probably not, subcommittee?
Yeah, I believe she still is.
She's still on it, right, Jen?
To my knowledge, she would like to be. You need to reestablish your boards because of the election.
Okay.
She did request to, or stated she had interest in continuing that role.
That's great. Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
Oh, you need to reaffirm the committee and membership on an annual basis.
Okay. And how do, do we do that here? Or do we do that here? Okay.
Yep. You can do it here and now if you wanted to.
Can we reaffirm Annie and myself for that committee? Is there anyone else on it?
Did you want to get on that?
What's the process? I just nominate myself?
Sure.
Okay. I'm in.
All right. I'll nominate you. I'll nominate Mr. Piper. Yes?
First, I have a motion to continue the master plan steering committee.
I'll make a motion to continue the master plan steering committee.
Thank you.
Second.
Was that Mr. Guide that said second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Were you going to move certain people beyond that?
I make a motion to nominate Mr. Piper to the master plan subcommittee. Does that work?
This is Barbara. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Do we have to add Annie on that, too?
Yeah. Do we need to add all of us?
Because it's continuing, the existing members would remain in place, and you're now adding one additional one. It's not, they don't actually get an appointment to get sworn on.
Right.
So, it's more pro forma. You're just adding an additional one body.
Okay. Do we have to formally remove Mr. Marshawn? Or is that?
No.
Okay.
All of his functions with the planning board ceased when he became a selectman.
Okay.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And I just got locked out for the NEPA manifest. And then we have a, we need to approve the NEPA, sorry, NEPA manifest for April 16th, 2022, for the amount of $179.65. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Were you going to move certain people beyond that?
I make a motion to nominate Mr. Piper to the master plan subcommittee. Does that work?
This is Barbara. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Do we have to add Annie on that, too?
Yeah. Do we need to add all of us?
Because it's continuing, the existing members would remain in place, and you're now adding one additional one. It's not, they don't actually get an appointment to get sworn on.
Right.
So, it's more pro forma. You're just adding an additional one body.
Okay. Do we have to formally remove Mr. Marshawn? Or is that?
No.
Okay.
All of his functions with the planning board cease when he became a selectman.
Okay.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Absane. I abstain?
Yeah, you can. Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I'll, I'll, I'll send you three an email.
Okay. Thank you.
Nobody left from the public, correct? So, there's no other comments?
There are still, there's still one person from the public on, in Zoom.
Okay.
But I can, I can end it at any point.
Okay.
Dennis?
Yes?
This is Barbara. I have, I think you need to make a correction because the actual amount on the NEPA manifest is 197.65, and you said 179.65.
I apologize.
You transposed the numbers.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
I'll make that correction in the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I dyslexic. Well, you were reading it sideways, so you get a pass.
Careful. All right. Do we need to go into non-public? Oh, is that what you want to do?
No, I was going to make a motion to close the hearing for...
Oh, excellent.
You can just declare the meeting on that.
Declare the meeting down at 7:53.
Okay. You adjourned at 7:53.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, y'all.
Have a good night, Barbara.